Okay, I'd like to start the meeting of the Hopkinton Town Council, February 3rd, 2014, with a moment of silent meditation and salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America- And to the republic for which it stands- One nation, under God- Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, folks, need a motion to sit as a licensing board?
So moved.
Okay, motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First on the agenda is a campground license renewal. Open a hearing on the renewal of the following campground license. Holly Tree Campgrounds Incorporated, Marie Patrizo, 109 Ashaway Road, Ashaway, Rhode Island. License for 158 campsites and safari sites continued from January 21st, 2014. Is the applicant present?
Yep.
Okay. Lisa, has all fees paid and notice is posted?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments? Sorry.
Somebody wants to make a comment?
Yeah. Does anybody down in the council have any comments?
No.
Okay. The applicant, do you have any?
Yeah.
Anything for us, anything for us? Okay.
I'll make a motion that the license renewal of Holly Tree Campgrounds Incorporated be approved, subject to all state and town regulations being met and all town taxes current prior to issue.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. Any further discussion? Or any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Seven hours left.
It might be, you never know.
On the way back.
Yeah.
Yeah, I need a motion to-
Mr. Motion.
A motion to adjourn this license report and repeat these campaigns.
Okay, motion made.
Second.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Approve Town Council meeting minutes of January 6th, 2014. Accept the January 6th, 2014 transcript as a record of the decision regarding Megawatt Energy Solutions LLC. Town Council meeting minutes of January 21st, 2014, January 15th, 2014. Omnibus meeting report, budget workshop notes of February 25th, 2013, and March 11th, 2013.
I'd like to pull January 6th.
January 6th, okay. Anybody else?
Motion to accept the January 6th, 2014 transcript as the record of the decision on our Megawatt Energy Solutions LLC. Town Council meeting minutes of January 21st, 2014, January 15th, 2014. Omnibus meeting report, budget workshop notes of February 25th, 2013, and March 11th, 2013.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
January what page, mother?
Seven.
I have one question.
Five lines down. Councillor Capalvo felt the situation was a personal one between two brothers. We should please add, because I know I said it, "And the council could not be involved." And the council could not be involved. Thank you. What's up?
This is the sixth.
Yeah, James.
I have one-
Oh, yeah, David, gotcha.
One where we have to add, on the council budget workshop notes on February 25th, pay that be page six. Two, four, six, eight, tenth line down, says Councillor Capalvo would "asked," I believe should be in there.
Oh, yes, I saw that, yeah.
What day, 25th?
Page six. Um, I thought it was two, four, six, eight, ten, tenth line down, into the line that says Councillor Capalvo.
Yeah.
If we stick the word "asked," what?
I didn't see that.
Other than that?
Yep.
Good.
The only thing is, I should have spoke on the 21st. At the bottom of page eight, it doesn't say who seconded my motion to adjourn in honor of Lord Kenyon. And then Mother Ladies, this is Council Blank, and I failed to bring it up.
We'll be correct.
So we've already approved February 21st, and I should have.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great, Mr. Page. Okay, do you have a motion to approve? We already made the motion, right?
Well, it's the, yeah, motion to approve Town Council meeting minutes of January 6th, 2014.
That's correct.
Second.
That's correct.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the first public forum. Anyone out there wishing to be heard? Okay, not yet. Next on our agenda is the Town Manager Report. Bill McGarry.
Thank you. Just very briefly, January 23rd, DPW foreman Dave Caswell and I attended the bid opening for the DPW Street Sweeper in the council chambers. We received two bids, and they're currently being reviewed by DPW personnel in order to make a determination and probably go to the Town Council in the next meeting in February. And funding for the Street Sweeper has been previously approved by the Town Council in the FY 2014 budget, CIP.
Okay, any questions for Bill?
I have a question, the second one, on the second portion, Bill.
On the what, please?
The Southway Regina University Health Center.
Oh, yes.
I just have a question. What is the cost on that, and who goes?
Well, the cost is, the total cost is $10,000. It's $2,500 per person, and they request, like, four-
You're serious?
-department directors from each town. But this is a statewide thing.
$10,000?
That's the total cost per town or per city, yes.
And that comes out of the term, Arkin?
If someone were to go, it would, yes.
Are you thinking of going?
No. I mean, I'd be afraid to say yes at this point.
That's a good way to take it.
Right. One question.
Sure.
So we used up that money, or the funding that was allocated for the Street Sweeper last year, right? We switched that over to, at the last moment with the budget. Didn't we take the money out of the Street Sweeper account?
Actually, what we did was, we took half of it for this fiscal year.
Yeah, yeah.
So we have, I believe it's like $28,000 this fiscal year to make the one payment.
Okay.
And then after that, it's $60,000 that we've put aside for the next two years to lease it for, it'd be a two-and-a-half-year lease.
Okay. Okay, we're not buying it?
Or lease to own.
Lease to own.
Right.
Lease.
Oh, I thought it was lease to own. I thought at the end of the term, I think we owned it.
Oh, we do.
Yeah, yeah.
The financing is through the leasing.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
In other words, we're not, it's not an outright purchase.
Right.
We're financing it over two-and-a-half or three years.
Because I know we allocated stuff in this current budget.
Yes.
For, and then we took, we pulled that money out. I forget how much it was. I thought it was $35,000. Do we need $35,000, Frank?
I can, I have a idea.
To balance the budget?
That was, that was the amount, I think that was going into the fund now, is what I thought.
Was it?
I think those figures are correct.
Because you and I were talking about, we're gonna lose the Street Sweeper.
No, no, we allocated for the-
Lose it.
Not lose it, but we were gonna get it last year, but then it was late in the year.
Right.
Yeah, but we just pushed it over. That's the beauty of CIP.
It's not a problem.
Yeah, it's, it's no issue.
It's a three-year finance. There's the money that's in the now is $38,000.
Okay.
We only have to make one payment, which is about $30,000. That leaves us $8,000 left over.
Yeah.
This fiscal year is $63,000.
Right.
Next fiscal year is $60,000.
Okay.
So it's like half, whole, whole.
So we had, I just wanna get this straight. So we had, we had more money in there initially, but we took some of it out, am I not correct?
Well, initially, I think, David, what you're alluding to is that for the budget process, they wanted to buy it outright.
Oh.
And then I suggested, let's lease it and spread it out over the term, so it eased up our budget process, and we were able to pass on some savings to the town.
That's right.
And also, we had-
That one shot was not part of the budget.
Correct.
It was just in the CIP, which is a, you know, it's, it's a plan.
Yeah.
And then it was changed.
So it was never, it was finalized after your suggestion to change it from an outright purchase to-
To lease. Okay.
And at the same time, my understanding is, we had already saved the entire amount for the sweeper. We already saved the $180,000 for the sweeper, and we chose, because we were going to buy it outright that year, and we have chosen to do it over three years, which I think was a good suggestion.
The bids that came in, just so you know, the bids that came in, we received too. They're about $22,000 a pot. It's currently being reviewed by DPW, but the low bid was not consistent with the provisions of the RFP.
Mm-hmm.
It was a lesser piece of equipment that was significantly different from what we requested in the RFP. If there are some additional funds that are gonna be needed, they would, if there was another $22,000 that would be needed, if you wanted to purchase the Pelican or the more expensive one, it would go over to the 2016-17 CIP for the difference, and $22,000 would have to be added in the FY 17 budget. But right now, the way it's structured between the FYs, CIPs, it's just the way it should.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Phil. Okay, next on our agenda, under Old Business, is the Omnibus Meeting Recap. Number one is the location of student matriculation within the district is not limited by residency. And number two, number of school committee members from each town. I had put this on the agenda, thinking one of the councillors wanted something from the omnibus, and I guess I, he and I didn't connect, so this ended up on the agenda almost by accident, but it's actually a good thing, because I think we weren't able, as a council, to speak about these particular topics at the omnibus meeting, because they weren't on our agenda. So, I know all of us have opinions on these two particular subjects, so I'll start out on the right here with Mr. Hurst.
First of all, I was the councillor in question, and I assume any responsibility to mix up, but the background of, previous to the omnibus meeting, the council president thought that maybe we should have, or mentioned to me, we should have a recap after the omnibus meeting, what was done. And I apologize for not hooking up with him and telling what I wanted specifically. The problem is with the open meeting floor is that you can't just casually say, we want to talk about the omnibus meeting. You gotta be specific on points, and I should have realized that at the point, because I would have talked about the issues that I'm interested in. As far as the student matricul, I'm not really interested particularly in speaking on either of these topics, but as far as the matriculation by students, it's my understanding that parents are agreeable, and they provide the transportation, children can be sent to other schools within the district. I'll stand corrected on that. My concern has been the potential possibility that at some time in the future, if the Charro Act were changed, that it could be a move to eliminate one of the elementary schools in Hopkinton. The, and that's basically where I'm coming from. I am opposed to opening the Charro Act. I'm a little concerned about that the Richmond Town Council is gonna try to use local legislators to go to the General Assembly.
Let's stick to the, let's stick to the-
Okay, so the town.
Okay.
Matriculation.
That is matriculation, because it's changing, what they wanna do is take, the goal about by the town of Richmond is to take students outside of their, the towns in which they reside, so it is a matriculation issue.
Okay.
I mean, that's, I mean, it's not talking out of, so I have concerns about that because of changing the Charro Act and the publicly stated goal of the Richmond Town Council to, to do that, and that obviously involves matriculation. And I understand the rationale behind it, but I do have concerns about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Sylvia.
Our legislator is here, Larry Valencia.
Yep.
Sir, and I'd like you to have these documents.
Sure.
And expect you to read them in two minutes, but I'd like you to have those, take them home.
Thank you, Sylvia.
These, the request from Richmond on both items here goes back to 2008, and the councils prior to us have wrestled with these topics and come to conclusions on it. What I handed our representative was just some of the ideas that came out of, it was collection of councillors and residents that had ideas on whether they were for or against these two items. What I'd, what I'd like to see us do is, and I've been thinking quite a bit about it, I'm sure we all have, is for perhaps two of us, maybe Council President and me, could talk to a couple of councillors in Richmond and start the conversation on what it is they want, and how they can get that, and how we could work together to resolve all the issues that revolve around town against town, taxpayer against taxpayer, and boundaries are not, or elementary schools, and who, all of those issues that have been going on for decades. And councillor husband, you know, you wrote about it, going back to the 80s-
Oh, wow.
And 90s, where issues came up.
Sure.
So, anyway, my thinking is that I'm, I know they're stuck on these items, I don't, I'm not gonna get into a whole lot of details, because we've already written it, it's in the council minutes, I've handed it to a couple of people here who are interested to see what it is that has been said in the past. But as far as Richmond's concerned, I've been waiting for Richmond to hopefully want to join us in some of the issues that have been brought out for these decades, and that is the problems with the Charro Act. I understand that Richmond is almost at capacity with their elementary school. When the Richmond Commons comes online and they start building hundreds of homes, where are their children gonna go? Well, I mean, they need to deal with that, the school does. So, in Hope Valley, it happened to be that we had a couple of portable classrooms, the enrollment went down for our area, we didn't need those portable classrooms, they've taken them out. So obviously, Richmond could have portable classrooms like we have had over here. I don't know if Charleston has them or not, but anyway, that's an option. But to solve the problems as a whole mass, we have tried on and off over the years to try to get the other towns to realize how difficult this topic has been for Hopkinton, because we always used to pay about 38% or 39%. Now, we've come down, Richmond's gone up, and Richmond found out what it's like to pay double for taxes. So that's why they're worried over there, and I don't blame them. So if we could get together with them and join them and deal with the major issue of unequal taxation, and all of these other things, you know, all the boundary lines would disappear, people could go to the elementary school closest to them, you would elect people at large, it wouldn't be boundary lines. What else? This number of school committee members, maybe there would be nine. I mean, I'm not opposed to those things, provided we, let's fix the Charro Act, and that includes these items, but also includes the way that it's taxed. Base it on enrollment, that's fair. Continue to base it on enrollment, but have one single school tax. That's all. Now, phase it in, and we've said, phase it in over 10 years, phase it in over a longer period of time, and that's why I'm glad to see our legislative here, because the only ways that this could happen is perhaps legally, but probably through the legislative body. And so, that's where I'm coming from. I'd like to see us approach Richmond and see if we could combine our legal and whatever else together to come to some agreement that, maybe they agreed with what we've been trying to do. But anyway, I just see where they could have what they want, but we need to deal with the bigger issue, and these things fall into place, that's my opinion. I don't wanna keep picking at the Charro Act and nitpicking at it. We all know that if you had, if Charro Act was regionalized tomorrow, it wouldn't be this way. It would not be this way. It'd be one, it's like Westerly, if they were gonna divide into three parts, it's crazy. They'd have, they'd have one little tax rate for the school, and then everybody else would pay twice as much. We pay twice as much, Richmond pays taxpayer twice, pays twice as much, we know that. And you can't, it's just unsustainable, so.
Okay. Yeah, well, all those, I can reach out to Joe Reddish and see if we can get together.
Maybe with Eric Davis, he's been the one that's been pushing this.
Yep, yep. So I'm fine with that. Barbara, two more.
I would like to address the issues specifically on the old business, the matriculation and the school committee members. The very last thing Charleston is going to do is agree to open the Charro Act specifically because of funding issues. It's the very last thing they're going to do. They would need to be taken to court to open it, because they will not open it, they're afraid of the funding issues, which is major. And I understand it's major, and I understand Richmond and Hopkinton may have one opinion, Charleston has an entirely different one, and they will fight tooth and nail not to open the Charro Act for those purposes. However, there are problems in the Charro Act that I think can be addressed, need to be looked at, and need to be solved outside of funding. And I realize other people would like to open the entire thing and address the funding issue, which is certainly the elephant in the room. However, the location of student matriculation within the district is not limited by residency, the school already does as a policy. So if there is room, and if a parent wants to do that, and if they can accommodate it, and if the parent drives the school, the child, they can do that. The problem is, that doesn't help small children that have a parent who cannot drive them to school, or in other issues, that they're, they live close to one school, the parents both work, that child is now on the bus for an hour or more wandering around before they get home. This is ridiculous. And I agree thoroughly that we should change the matriculation. We should allow the school to decide which children within the district will go to the nearest schools. They already separate children by school with the disabled, all the disabled children, all the ADA. There is a specific classroom in Charleston for one kind of disabled, a specific classroom in Richmond for another, and those children are taken from all the different towns to one school. It makes no difference where they live. We don't have a Down Syndrome program in Ashaway, in Hope Valley, in Richmond, and in Charleston, we have one. So they already do that where the children are disabled. We are asking that this should be done for children who are abled. I think it's really important to be able to give the school the ability to move children around, to sit, not just save money on transportation, I'm not so much concerned about the cash, although that would be very nice, I am mostly concerned that these elementary school children are on the buses at 4:30 and 5 o'clock, because I've seen them, and it's awful. It's just unacceptable for small infants. They just shouldn't be. So I feel very strongly that as far as matriculation should go, we should be able to open up the Charro Act, solve the problem, and let children go to the nearest school as the school determines. They do have to work out whether the sibling goes, they do have other things to work out, and the school committee and the school board need to work those things out. But indeed, they should be able to mix and match children from towns to schools that are nearest to them. I have a number of emails here from a number of people who have emailed me about this issue, specifically because they were unhappy and dissatisfied that we were not able to speak at the omnibus meeting, they really wanted to know our opinion on each of these issues that we did not speak on. I would like to read them, they're all short, but they are real people, they have names, they are not anonymous. Jeff Dushka, Town Council, I think open matriculation is an effective and fair process to control costs, make the best use of school facilities, and keep student bus trips as short as possible. Doreen Dolan, unable to make tonight's meeting due to prior commitment, but would like to express my support for open matriculation. I would like to see students attending the elementary school closest to where they live. I believe this is in the best interest of the student, and would save the district in transportation costs. I understand school committee size is also on the agenda for this evening. I think that each town should have the same number of representatives on the school committee. My only concern in reducing the number of representatives on the committee is whether or not it would be more difficult to fill seats for the subcommittees. Thank you for taking my opinion under consideration, Doreen Dolan. Kipsma, proud resident of Richmond, Lori Bouchard. I am unable to attend due to my employment, but would appreciate my electronic voice being heard. For seven years, Mr. Ritchie received our annual request for our children to attend a school that was not their designated school. Their elementary school is actually the furthest from our home due to the 250-year-old body of water rule. Because we live on the road of Alton Pond on its east side, we must attend Richmond Elementary while Ashaway Elementary buses drove right past us for a seven-minute ride to school. All their friends, community activities, and sense of community belong to Ashaway and Hope Valley. This division may have worked for the few housing developments there were for years, but as Richmond continued to grow, some schools' classroom size did as well. Open matriculation makes sound economic sense on many levels, and builds a more solid community sense. Please place my vote favorably for open matriculation. If you would like to discuss this in more detail with me, I would be pleased to do so. Amy Williams, thank you for the heads up. I am intending to attend this evening, however, I don't feel well this evening and need to stay home. Sorry that I can't attend to voice my view that the Charro Act does not stipulate anything about towns and attendance, it states elementary school district. I think this issue will continue to be an issue going forward though, so hopefully I can come another time to share my views. I also think that one will need to watch what happens with the preschool issue and state mandates, and if the district is going to need some flexibility. This is an original Amy Williams, this is, so that was a second. My name is Amy Williams, and I am a resident of Hopkinton. I attended the Omnibus Meeting last night, and I was quite disappointed that Hopkinton did not address some of the topics discussed. That was the website. In thinking more about the elementary school and town of residence issue, I think it is interesting that the cost of the physical upkeep of the elementary schools has been regionalized, but the savings from smarter use of transportation or school attendance has not been regionalized. If the towns were responsible for the infrastructure of their respective schools, then perhaps it makes sense to have very rigid town boundaries when it comes to school attendance. However, that is not the case, and the district has that responsibility, so why can't we give the district the responsibility of also saving money on smarter transportation of our elementary school children? I understand the district is governed by the Charro Act, but there seems to be room for reinterpretation of the matriculation issue. Cole Rosier, there are many advantages to open matriculation, it's about time, it's on the table. Nancy Kellogg, hi, my daughter attends the middle school now, but this would have been wonderful to have happened to us when she was in elementary school. She spent 45 minutes on the bus one way each day. I ended up having to make other arrangements due to the length of the bus ride. This would be a very good thing to happen, especially around Shanuck. Thank you, wish I could attend council meeting. Lloyd Rainey, I encourage the Town Council to consider open matriculation, especially if it does not negatively imbalance the class sizes in the schools. Matriculation should strongly be considered as a means to balance class sizes and school sizes, as well as to reduce costs by having students attend the closest school. These were, and Lisa, I'll just give those to you. There are a number of parents who are interested in this and concerned about it. It is not, it's not something that should just be locked under the Charro Act. This is a common sense response. It does not ruin the community of the school, or the community around Hope Valley, Ashaway, Richmond, or Charleston. It actually keeps the community tighter, which I think is extremely important. As far as the number of school committee members, I am just as happy to see nine as 11. I have gone to any number of school committee meetings, and it is totally untenable having 11. By the time everyone talks, many times, the public is totally ignored. You simply do not have anyone saying, gee, what would the public like to say now? Because the school board reasonably has to talk among itself, but they always forget to ask for public input, which I have often had to remind them to do. I'm outspoken, but a lot of the people there are shy, and they're not outspoken. And this is a real problem. 11 is unwieldy, I don't think it's a tenable number. I have no problems with 3, 3, and 3. We're very close to, Richmond and Hopkinton are certainly very close to population, and Charleston, although it's lower, if you ever added in all of the summer people, you would have it probably higher than all of us. I have no problems with nine, I'd like to see nine. And, because I think 11 is completely untenable, and I have no problems with 3, 3, 3, and whether it's one man, one vote, is it one parent, two parents? How many parents are you counting? Let alone how many children go to the school, how many people have how many children? Which part are you counting? Just the number? 8,188 citizens? All of which, you know, 50% of ours might be elderly? You know, so they have less to do with the school? We do not have families now with five and six kids, we have families of one and two. And so the schools are shrinking, although they were, and Sylvia is right about that, And so the schools are shrinking, although they were, and Sylvia is right about that, designed for 300 more than are there now. So my opinion is the matriculation should certainly be addressed, and we should try to solve that for the benefit of the students, not just money, students and parents, and I would like to see nine members, and I will go on record as saying that, instead of 11.
Thanks Barbara. David?
First, I can't, I can't fathom Hope Valley School ever closing because of any change in drawing the lines and sending kids to Richmond or sending them to Ashaway or Charleston. So I'm not even gonna, I'm not even gonna bother with that. It's just a hollow argument. It's just, we're not gonna close Hope Valley School, as far as I'm concerned, we're not gonna close Ashaway School or any of the four elementary schools. It's just a stupid argument. There's a lot of problems, there's a lot of problems when you don't use the community's town lines to indicate where kids are gonna go. Because one year, you might be sending your child, if the child could live in Hopkinton, you'd send him to Richmond, and all of a sudden Richmond has a big development come in, and all of a sudden, within a couple of years, there's a whole lot of kids going to Richmond, and you're thinking, jeez, I really, you know, we've gotta move the line again because we've gotta shrink the area that we take the kids from in Hopkinton because we have too many kids in Richmond. So I don't want that line fluctuating back and forth on a yearly basis. And it's, it's up to the school committee, not really up to the town council, but it's up to the school committee to determine, just because a parent wants their child or children to go to a specific school, whether that's a feasible idea in a sense that, can we, without adding cost to the problem, to the situation, can we send a bus down there to pick up these three kids, or is it just ridiculously expensive to do that? So I think there's a lot of little problems with it. I like the idea, and we've got perfect examples in Shanick for one, the Richmond section of Hope Valley for two, that these kids should go, the Richmond kids in Hope Valley should go to Richmond, go to Hope Valley School, instead of going right past Hope Valley School to go up to Richmond. Same thing with Shanick kids, it's no sense in having a Shanick child that's on the Richmond side of the river going to Richmond simply because they're 100 yards across the river, whereas Charleston's school is a mile and a half away. It just doesn't make any sense at all. So there's a lot of reasons for getting rid of the Hopkinton kids, go to Hopkinton, and Richmond kids go to Richmond, and Charleston kids go to Charleston, that's the way it is. There's a lot of reasons for that. But it also involves a lot of problems too, that the school committee, not the town council, the school committee is gonna have to resolve as far as population goes. So I support it as long as it's done properly, because I do think, I don't want kids riding on a bus for 45 minutes each way each day, that's just crazy. So I support the idea of them going to the closest school, if feasible, if feasible. The second question, we've got three towns, I don't understand, I will never understand, I'm sure there's a history to it, and there is, why two towns have four representatives and one town has three? Doesn't make any sense. I mean, they're all part of the deal, and so, you know, I'm not gonna use any analogies, but the bottom line is, is that all three towns should have three representatives, as far as I'm concerned. And nine is a nice round number. We've had difficulty in the past, and I'm sure we're gonna have difficulty in the future finding people who wanna serve on the school committee, and boy, if you're looking for nine instead of 11, I think that's gonna help that out too. So that's the way I feel about that.
Okay.
Mr. President, can I say?
Well, no, I'm not gonna speak on this topic. As far as matriculation, it occurs now, I think we all know that, I think according to the minutes from Barry Ritchie of the omnibus meeting, there's about 20 families that use the matriculation. And if you want your child to go to Richmond, if you're closer to Richmond but you actually live in Hope Valley, you can request the administration, look at that, and see how it goes. So I'm certainly in favor of it, it seems like it makes financial sense, but the system occurs now, you know, and I guess from what I've read in the minutes from the meeting, that it's a school committee issue. They really need to put it on the agenda, vet it out, and then ultimately, I guess the legislature will probably have to do something with that issue. But it's not really the town council, but I know it's important to a lot of the residents, and that's why it's on the agenda, so. So like I said, I'm in favor of the open matriculation, that makes economic sense for the towns and the parents, as far as the kids not being on the bus so long. As far as the number of school committee members, it's based on a census, you know, next, when the census is done, I think every 10 years, when that's done, we may have three. You know, so to change it to nine from 11, I just wanna let it take its course and let the census dictate how many by population each town should have, so I'm fine with that process the way it is, so I don't see a big change in that. But as far as the matriculation, I know it's very important to everyone, and I would support that for sure. But like I said, the school committee members need to take this up and take it to the next level, so. I just don't know if these two particular items, if we can kinda come to consensus and maybe ultimately prepare some kind of a consensus, like a draft letter, supporting...
Yeah, a statement if something's up.
Yeah. Does everybody have a consensus on matriculation, or no? You guys?
I think he needs to comment, I need to comment again on it.
Well, I wanna say something to, first of all, this conversation tonight, and I want the public, and I hope the press quotes me on this, because I think it's the most important thing. The reason we're doing this tonight is, the last couple of months is the political maneuvering of the Richmond Town Council in regard to the omnibus meeting and these issues about matriculation, and that's why we're here today. That's the most important thing. We wouldn't have had different agendas if it wasn't for the Richmond Town Council, that should be said, and that's a fact. And also the way, for the first time in my lifetime, I've been involved in local politics for many years, that the omnibus meeting was conducted differently, specifically because of maneuvering by the Richmond Town Council. So that deserves being a permanent record of this town. First of all, I'm willing to work with other towns, but other towns have to work with us. And I think that, in letters that I've written to the newspaper, both the Charahoe Times and the Wesley Sun, I've pointed that out about the thing with the town of Richmond. I think logically and intellectually, you'd want a child to go to the nearest town. Is, in response to Council husband, who I love and I've...
Near a school. Near a school.
Yes. But the thing is, that public statements by people have talked about Hopkinton have, I know one council, I believe Council Davis of Richmond was the one that made the comment about Hopkinton having two schools, so it's been out there. Everybody knows Hope Valley has had some structural issues, so it's not within the realm of fantasy that maybe that school would be targeted at some point in the future. The thing with the Charahoe Act is, the Charahoe Act, and the way they do it is, it has to be approved by all three towns, so it could be years into the future where they could eliminate one of the elementary schools. And the other thing I'm concerned...
Can you stay on the agenda? You gotta stay on the agenda. It's either matriculation or the nine members, or 11 members.
Okay, on the matriculation issue, what I'm interested in is, is the members of the Rhode Island General Assembly representing the Charahoe towns, are they gonna support legislation without a vote of the public? And this was, John Anderson pointed out at the omnibus meeting, that they could put a bill in, and they don't have to have the public vote on it as far as attendance lines. And I wanna know how legislators feel, whether or not they think the voters should approve, vote on that, number one, which is, deals with matriculation. And I don't think any changes should happen without the vote of the qualified electors of Charleston, Richmond, Hopkinton. I think to go to the legislature and do an edem around the public is uncalled for, and I won't be a potty to it. Thank you.
Okay. Sylvia?
There are some parents here, and I don't want anybody to be afraid that Hope Valley Schools got a structural problem. It does not have a structural problem. There was a problem, and it's been repaired. And that was a few years ago. The voters did vote on the matriculation, the, taking down the boundary lines as far as the elementary schools are concerned, and Charleston voted no, Hopkinton voted no, and I...
What year was that, Sylvia?
Lisa, do you remember what year it was that it came up?
I didn't know, I had it in mind, I wanted that information.
Yeah. I didn't even think of it until just now, so. So if something does come up, since the voters have voted this down before, it should, certainly, if anything comes up, it certainly should go to voters again, because that would be appropriate. So when Richmond brought up these two items the first time in 2008, this is what was written. After, and this is what I wrote, and, by listening, okay? "After following bus runs, talking to school committee members and our residents, I do not support a change to the Charahoe Act that allows for only redistricting. On the surface, it makes sense, it would save ballots and transportation budget if kids go to the elementary school closest to the residents. What would it mean in the long run, and what are the unintended consequences? I talked to residents that have specifically purchased property in our town, even though the school tax rate is higher. They chose to live here due to the elementary school's excellence. With redistricting, they may find their children will instead attend another school in another town. If a Hopkinton child attends Charleston School but used to pay a higher Hopkinton school tax rate, will they now get to pay the lower Charleston School tax rate? Currently, we have protections in the Charahoe Act. If a child or a sibling is in the elementary school, they can stay in that school until grade four. People want their children to be schooled locally, they want them close to home, as in every study and survey proven, that kids score better on every measure when they stay in the local school. If the goal is to have shorter runs for those on the boundary lines, thereby lessening transportation costs, consider this. Even if you think you live close to a school, you may still have up to an hour run or more, and most bus runs are at least 45 minutes, all of them, okay? However, in most instances, it is the run, not where you live, that determines the length of the bus ride. For instance, my kids were only one mile away from a 15-minute ride, but the bus turned south at the intersection, dropped off all the kids, then doubled back to the original intersection an hour later and dropped them off. That was normal, and, you know, didn't go past an hour, we felt lucky. It's the run. Even if a child on the boundary drives by a different school, they will likely be on a long bus run. However, there must be an instance, a bus has to go out of its way to pick up kids to bring them to the right elementary school. Will these few instances lower the cost, or will it end up backfiring? What's to keep the administration from having a RISE program in one elementary school, and now the elementary schools from the other two, now the kids from the other two elementary schools will have to be transported there? What other programs will be developed at just one school? What will happen to the students on boundary lines when a grade in one school ends up overcrowded? Will they end up ping-ponging to different schools to ease this problem? But not because they are closer to a school. Will it end up erasing or decreasing costs, or will it increase? The, let's see, I'm gonna skip some of this old stuff. Do we trust the future that whoever gets elected to the school committee will make the right decisions once they have total autonomy over who goes to which elementary school, and will they remember the reason we changed it? Is it right to pay a higher school tax rate but not attend your local school? The Charahoe Act requires residents to prove residency. Why? Because they pay a different school tax, depending on which town you live in. Now, if we redistrict and remove those lines, you will still prove residency but pay a higher or a different amount than the rest of the students in the same class. Is that right? However, if we're going to go down the road of becoming more like one district, like Westlake, let's take down all the lines, one district with district-wide community, school committee representation with one school tax rate. In the light of day, I realize this one change will only end up hurting our town's people and end up costing more in the long run. Based upon past school committee actions, I, school committee actions, I have no reason to expect a different outcome unless we all make comprehensive changes." So that was what was talked about in 2008.
Thanks Sylvia. Catherine, do you have any questions?
I'm here, be sure.
If you wanna come to the podium, just introduce yourself, yeah. State where you live and your name and all that good stuff.
My name is Catherine Juisty, I am a resident of Hopkinton, I live at 14 Keith Drive. As some of you may know, I've started an initiative with the school committee, where I go to school committee meetings, and then I report back to parents in the form of a newsletter what's happened at those meetings. And I started that to become more involved myself, but also to help parents become better engaged in what was happening at these meetings in a more palatable fashion than actually attending them. So I've been able to communicate with a lot more parents than I would at my children's two schools, which is Hope Valley and the middle school. And matriculation is important to them. And I've heard from another number of parents with examples of children who live down the street from a school but are on a bus ride, that is 45 minutes to an hour each way to go to the town, their resident town elementary school. When we talk about community, I think community is what you make it, and we all live in these towns and go to Charahoe schools. And we're comfortable with a regionalized middle school and high school, and I think we can feel that way about the elementary schools. And I'm not suggesting one elementary school by any means, I would never support that, but I think community is what you make it. And if I have a child who lives in Richmond but lives down the street from me, I would like to see them go to the same school as my children, and not have to pass by it on a bus ride. More than the cost savings, I think matriculation and opening up that matriculation just makes sense. And a lot of you brought up a lot of points that have been brought up by parents and made very valid points. I think you're talking about some separate issues, and I understand the taxation is all wrapped into it, and I understand your point on that, but I think you need to take baby steps, and I think opening matriculation could be a way to take a baby step. I don't even think you need to open the Charahoe Act to do that, it's a matter of interpretation. It does not say in the Charahoe Act that you must attend the elementary school in your town. The language is very open to interpretation. I don't think it needs to be a legislative issue, I think it's a conversation that can be had and a change that can be made, and maybe it's a way to open those lines of communications with the other towns, and start working on one small piece and see where it leads. I just started paying a lot of attention to this, and I fully admit that. In 2008, I was not paying attention to these things like I am now. But that was 2008, and it's 2014, and I think it's time to take a look at these things again. They're not gonna close an elementary school right now. I can't imagine they will ever close an elementary school, because we do keep having babies. I have three, so I can't imagine, you know, we're going to close an elementary school. I think you need to show trust as well. I think it's, if it should be a school committee issue, then you give it to the school committee, and these are the people that you have elected, and you trust them to make the right decision. So I'd ask that you look at it again. If you put it to a vote, I'd be interested to see what everybody thinks about it, but I believe the last time it was put to a vote, it was wrapped up into that whole huge bond issue as well, and that, I think, clouded the issue as well. If you just put one matriculation piece, you can pinpoint it and get a sense there. So I would just ask you to take another look at it, and I was very pleased to hear your thoughts on it. You all made very good comments, it was good to hear, but I'd like to see it go forward. I think it doesn't maybe affect a ton of children, but it goes a long way in towards a regional community, and that's what we are.
Thanks Catherine.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyway, I guess that everybody's said their piece, I guess, I appreciate it. So it looks like we'll, to be continued, like Sylvia and I maybe will work on it behind the scenes with our friends from Richmond, maybe, and see if we can get some, make some inroads on it. Okay. Next, under new business, is to discuss and consider adopting the proposed townwide fiscal year 2014-15 annual goals, and fiscal year 2016-2018 multi-year goals developed by the town department heads. Bill McGary.
Thank you. Well, this is an annual event where the department heads meet to discuss the annual or multi-year goals. Just to make it clear that these proposed goals are developed by department heads, and the decision as to whether or not to fund the goals that require funding are not made here tonight. These proposed goals, those decisions are made at the budget workshops at a later date. So the purpose of these goals now is just to present them to the town council for their proposed adoption based on the discussions and by the department heads back on January 9th.
Just like a wish list, sort of.
Yeah.
Right, okay, because I have to admit, I kinda forgot the process last year, and I called Bill, and I said, jeez, Bill, we're asking to approve all these large expenses, I don't know what they cost, why they need them. And so Bill was polite and giving me the heads up as to, it's just a wish list, and we'll delve into them during the budget process, and certainly that made me feel more comfortable. Anyways, yeah, sure.
I just have a question. The number two is upgrade the police dispatch, radio console, telephone communication and video system. When did we last do that? I thought we redid the police's radios and consoles and telephones, and I thought we redid those, you know, maybe five or six years ago. I mean...
I'm not sure, maybe the chief's aware of it, but I'm not...
Or maybe it's just a question, and we can talk about it in the budget cycle.
Yeah.
I'd like to hear that answer, though, from the chief.
Sure.
I don't think it's been during night time, or so. It was, I know when it was, a couple of times, when the building got built, and then due to the EMA requirements. Correct, I know, it's been done a couple of times.
Well, let's let chief point.
My understanding is much of the equipment came over from the, from the old building. They did update some of the equipment, it's in, it's in, let's say it's very antiquated. It's in, it's in, let's say it's very antiquated right now, and it's becoming, it's becoming a problem, to the point where we have, the communications come out, and they can't replace some of the, the parts to it. Our backup is a, is a car radio, and in this day and age, is, is getting, it's getting dangerous, let's put it that way. So I think it's something that really needs to be addressed. And unfortunately, communications is not cheap. So I've, I've researched, gone over to Charleston, seen what they, what they have, I've checked on some grants and things such as that. Unfortunately, federal grants have pulled back quite a bit, and so I'm checking other avenues. But it's something that I think we're going to have to take on at some point, probably sooner than later.
I have another question.
Sure.
So actually, we're not talking about the cars and what they have in the cars. It's the console itself, dispatch console, it's physically in the building.
Correct. Our computers in the cars were all updated this year.
Right, that's what I'm thinking, right.
And that was all funded by the state. It's, the radios and the, and the computers, the backup and the recordings are kind of hodgepodge, let's put it that way.
So most of it did come from, from the old building?
So, yeah.
Does that make sense?
Right. And what didn't came in when the building was built, you know, nine years ago, and with, with technology the way it is, nine years is a long time to not have something updated.
Well, I guess it said, it's something we take up and we do our best with it budget time.
So my understanding, so this is the dispatch radio inside the police department itself, and the telephone communication video system is within the police department?
Correct.
All right, so that was originally done nine years ago when we built the building?
The video, yes, that was done, some of the computers, some of the, the computers and the radio came from, from the old building.
From the old building, so even though it was moved over in nine, it may be older than that.
Correct. And I've got a, like a three-page proposal that I've put out to some agencies to try and see if we can get some type of funding, but unfortunately, the pocketbooks are a little tight right now.
Yeah, we'll take it up at the budget, but yeah, thanks, chief, for the heads up.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Another question.
Yes.
On number six, Bill, the outdated documents, do you have a feel for what in particular? Is it mostly financial, or what?
It's like all of the above.
Yeah.
I think that, according to the statute, there are different lengths of time that you have to keep, different types of documents, some are three years, some are seven years, and some you have to keep all the time. But what we're finding is, and we're going through that at the Crandall House now, is that there is an inordinate amount of
Joan.
documents that are maintained, that they're, they're really useless, and they're clearly way past the date where we could get rid of them. And that was one of the discussions at the meeting, where is to have all the department heads in those particular buildings take a conscious effort, you know, to get rid of that stuff, consistent with the Records Retention Act of the Secretary of State's office. I mean, it's taking up room, it causes a fire hazard, I mean, we're just keeping a lot of documents that we need not keep.
Yeah, I, I worry, I guess, I guess that the things that are important Lisa would have in the vault, for instance, the old waterline stuff, it keeps coming up, and you're like, you know, those, there are sometimes old correspondence.
There are certain retention schedules for every department, and then practicality and common sense dictates that that is permanent, you would never get rid of that.
Right, there are some things, yeah.
There are, you know, a lot of it, if you want me to elaborate a little bit on it, specifically to elections, declarations after three years, you know, from, from a 210 election, you can assemble that material, you have to put in a request to the archives, and they say yes or no, you can get it out there. That's, that's just a duplicate, originals. The, the results of an election are permanent records, and you have all that, plus you have meeting minutes from council records where people are sworn in, so it's, it's stuff that is, there's no way you can ever retain it all, and it takes a long time to go through, because you have to be careful, you don't want to throw something up that is very important, and you really careful. We've been denied in the past, too, for some, for something, but I think we were too early in our request, and they had to wait. So they're very careful, too, on the other end, that they just don't say arbitrarily, oh, sure, they look at it, they sign off on your request, those requests are permanent, so.
Well, I, well, thank you, and, and Bill, it, I guess, it makes a lot of sense, you go to your department heads, and they, they figure out what it is they need and they think is important, because they know.
I think, I don't want to say most, but a lot of the materials that we could get rid of are, are copies. Like Lisa has the originals, and she keeps those, but, you know, copies that go to the various departments, you know, the packages are this thick, but they're really duplicates of what the originals that she has.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions on the annual goals, or?
Yeah, Frank, one thing.
Sure.
Bill, what's the difference between on the 2014-2015 number four, complete installation of posting regular, regulatory townwide traffic signals, and number six on the 2016-2018? Isn't that the same?
One is street name signs, and the other one is regulatory town traffic signs.
Oh, okay.
Stop yield, not stop.
We're in the process, and Tim Teft has been doing a good job of changing over the regulatory signs. He's got a plan scheduled to do that.
Right.
But as far as the street signs, that's something that we have to address, that's going to take some time. So one's street signs and one's regulatory traffic signs, stop signs, do not pass, I guess.
Yeah. We're going to retain those old street signs, because I've, I've mentioned to somebody that, I think we could sell those old street signs. Don't you? I mean, I, you know, I'd love to have, down in the man cave, I'd love to have something that said Prospect Square. The old street sign, especially if it has the symbol of Hopkins, it ought to be really nice. Anyhow.
The town, the Democratic, he was a Democratic Party, donated for our First Centennial, the signs along Main Street that have insignia. Unfortunately, I think federal regulations that are requiring, they have to be replaced, so.
Yeah, change.
Well, I hope when they come down, I'll have to let Tim know that people may want to stop by and grab their sign.
Sure.
You wouldn't be surprised.
Buy them, buy them.
Buy them.
Oh.
Make them pay for it.
Oh, you bet. Got to get back some money, that's right. Is that going to cost us, by the way, is that, we have to pay for those new signs?
Yeah, we have, yes.
It's called a mandate.
Unfunded mandate, right? Yeah, why, don't we love those?
All right, so any other questions for the nine annual goals? And then what about the multi-year goals? Some of them are repetition from prior years, but
Nope.
All seem pretty much.
They're all good ideas.
Okay. Bill had put a motion down the bottom of his cover letter, someone wants to, you guys have no further discussion, I guess. Someone wants to read that motion.
I moved that the Hopkinton Town Council adopt the proposed fiscal year 2014-15 annual goals and the fiscal year 2016-18 multi-year goals.
Second.
Okay, motion made second. Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Bill. Okay. Next on the, under new business, is the discussion regarding the town moderator's vacancy and steps required to fill the vacancy for the 2014 Charahoe District Financial Meeting and the 2014 Hopkinton Financial Town Assembly.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I believe there's no vacancy in the office of town moderator. According to the law, that everybody serves in office until another is engaged in your room or you're discharged therefrom. And I brought one of my council citations on the bottom, it says, mentions your name, Chris, you know, the Constitution, but down here, at the very end, it says, assume two years or until another is engaged in his room or until he be legally discharged therefrom. I called Mrs. Kenny today, and she'd be willing to serve. My concern specifically is that we have the public, director of public welfare and the town moderator, there was no candidates in the last election. Even at this late date, we have not certified anybody to hold those positions. Those offices should be filled by a permanent person, and if you follow the, the law, as I understand it, that anybody, all of us who are elected to office or appointed to office, hold that office until they swear in somebody to take our place or we're discharged, or of course we die or we move to another town, so.
Or they resign.
Yeah. So there's no, there's never been a letter of resignation from them two people. So as far as I'm concerned, legally, and I'll stand corrected, Beverly Kenny is the moderator of this town, and whoever our last director of public welfare is, unless she resigns.
Well, I'm not talking about director.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, Beverly Kenny, as far as I am concerned, is legally the town moderator of Hopkins, and she's never resigned and never been discharged from office.
Well, there's a provision that says that you can fill the position if the, if the moderator is quote absent unquote, and she's absented herself from, released the last couple of town referendums, or not referendums, but assemblies. So, and there's certainly no, there was no reason for you to assume that she would show up and do the Charahoe meeting, so.
The question is, would she ever contact?
The question really is, is Frank has been asked, I mean, as far as this goes, Frank has been asked to contact, maybe Frank can talk about it.
I, I reached out, because I thought, you know, we had a vacancy, so I, you know, I reached out via email to some folks that, including Catherine and Amy Williams, if they were interested in being, you know, moderator in some capacity, whether it was just for the Charahoe meeting or for our town meeting. And there was a gal, Amy Williams, that stepped up and said, you know, I'd be willing to do it, you wouldn't have to pay me, I would want to do it and get involved, so she was kind enough to pick up an application from Lisa, fill it out, I guess, or a background check or whatever. So she's kind of in the works, but, you know, anyone who's interested, you know, I was just asked to, you know, reach out to some folks, and, and if anyone's interested, they can certainly stop by the clerk's office and get that process going, but, yes, Lisa?
Then we also have a letter of interest from Catherine Juisty.
Which is, is Juisty there? Yes, because I, I think.
And a school committee member, at the same time you got contacted, a school committee member called me and said, do we have somebody? So I started making phone calls, and I called Ed Wood. People I called were people who have chaired meetings before. So I talked to Ed Wood, I called Tom Buck, and I left a message for Phil Scalise, and I haven't heard back. He's out plowing. So I asked his wife, and she said, oh, well, if we want, we can call Phil to find out. So if you want, we could just, did make a decision at the next council meeting. But I would just hope that we would, if we, if we have people that have, have some experience, that we might consider them.
Yeah, you know, I, I.
But in the end, I mean, we could recommend a few people, and if someone can't, if something happens, you have a second person who might step up. But Tom, I mean, Scott, you pointed out that Beverly was interested, too? So I guess we do have a number of people.
You said a question being interested, she is the lawful.
Well, whatever, whether that is or isn't. She said that she would do it, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got a number of people that have said they, they would do it, so.
Geez, the big question is, what does an ultimate office mean?
Yeah, but.
Well, I don't know, but it's not for us, we're not going to reinvent the wheel of him.
No, we discussed this, we discussed that before, and we discussed it at the last budget meeting, specifically that there are times that a position like public work or public welfare is no longer of value, like the town waiters or the town fence runner. These are no longer of value, we do not need them any longer, and we do not have them, even though they are in our charter. We are not stupid here, we can use common sense. Now, as far as the moderator, I think Sylvia is correct, we can take a look at the people that are there, people who might put a name in for it, and it should be taken a look at. But we do not become just legalistic, and there is no common sense at all.
Yeah, I think, yeah, if I can just.
Scott, can I ask you one question? If Beverly Kenny doesn't, doesn't resign.
She never showed up at the others.
What are we going to do? What are we going to do? Just going to sit here and just wait for her to walk in, which she's never going to do?
And she hasn't for the last two? No.
That's why, that's why the charter has the provision to allow you to appoint in the, in the occasion of an absence.
Well, what I'd like to recommend is, if people have been contacted, if they want, if they really want it, they can come in and fill out a form. I didn't even ask anybody to do that. If they, if they want it, they can fill out a form, and have it on the next agenda, and we'll make a decision.
Right.
Yeah.
We'll interview and, and executive session, then vote on it in the next meeting.
I would suggest that we only interview people that we've never interviewed before. If we've got.
Yeah, yeah, these two folks, yeah, right.
If there's someone that, you know, so, all right.
Yep.
Okay, we've got a plan.
So we've got a plan and action, okay.
So Lisa, could, could you let the school department know that we'll be making a decision in the next meeting, and we will inform them?
I will update them.
Thank you.
I anticipated when I first inquired as to whether or not they had actually replaced the individual, because it was our turn this year, she said that she had contacted the Richmond moderator, and she had pulled off, and so I expected that maybe after this town council meeting, we might have an appointment, but I will certainly let her know.
Two weeks.
It's plenty of time.
Yeah, two weeks we'll have one, yeah.
Okay.
And thanks, Catherine, for stepping up and playing, I appreciate that.
Is the date the sixth or the second?
It is March fourth.
I think I gave her the wrong date when I talked to Beverly today, but.
Well, it's okay.
Well, it's the first Tuesday, anyway.
Just kidding. Okay, great, thanks, everyone. Next, under new business, is discuss and consider invitation to Hopkinton Legislative Delegation to attend a meeting of the town council and schedule potential dates. Sylvia wanted us on, and one of our legislative partners is here, Mr. Valencia, so Lisa, I guess you can maybe, Lily, you go ahead.
Well, we just, we, we'd like to have them come in before, it was, it was, it was a good idea, and to, for them to update us on things that they think are important statewide.
Relative to a time.
And anything that we need to relay to them, too. So, so now we just need to kick around some dates, do we want to do it prior, or during the council meeting? I guess that makes sense, we've done it before, as long as the agenda isn't lopsided and overly heavy.
Well, yeah, we'll do that, but we first got to find out their availability, I guess, right?
Right.
The Wednesday nights are good nights.
All right, yeah, that's the only night, one of the nights you don't have to run up sick.
Maybe Lisa can put out the feelers.
I have with your town council meetings, because I also have town exit rates on Monday meetings.
So we'll put out a few dates, you're not afraid we'll get a meeting night, is it Tuesday?
Do, and we don't, we don't have to be specific on the agenda items that we talked all legislative for, do we, for the open meetings?
Well, I think it's important to have.
Well, Frank will deal with that, but he'll make sure it's worthy, right? But Lisa, you said the next meeting, there's a, what is it, President's Day or something?
Yeah, it must be.
Yes, because of President's Day.
Oh, so maybe the first meeting in March?
March third, March.
Does that sound okay?
Find out what works for them.
Yeah, well, it's okay.
All right, yeah, well, like you said, we could put out a few different dates to make sure everybody's on board, so beginning with March third.
But I'll target Mondays.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Good idea, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Last public forum, anyone out there wishing to be heard?
Do you have anything you want to tell us now on your public forum?
I'll just say a couple things really, Mr. President. Just that, you know, I was very interested to hear the remarks of the council regarding matriculation, the public input as well. You know, Richmond passed a resolution in favor of matriculation, and I think Catherine addressed the idea that although there is nothing in the Charahoe Act that specifically prevents that policy, because it's, it's vague and open to interpretation, the present school committee has been reluctant to act on that, and I think that's why Richmond passed a resolution calling for that to be put formally in the Charahoe Act. So that's that one issue. Happy to discuss anything else. I have any questions you have for me?
What's the budget?
I didn't have you on the agenda.
Well, you did ask, it's public forum, he brought it.
It's public forum.
Well, you did ask, it's public forum, you brought it, well, I know if I bring something up, we get in trouble, don't you? We can only talk about whatever you bring up and we get in trouble.
Well, if there's anything... Super slow, Larry, but...
Obviously, if there's anything that you wanna talk about matriculation or the nine-member school committee, I would think would be fair game.
That's really on our agenda, but I think we vetted that out pretty well.
Is there, do you have any comments about it?
Um, I will say this, the Richmond Town Council passed a resolution in favor of both of those ideas, a nine-member council and matriculation. So I brought that resolution to the lawyers at Ledge Council at the State House. After having more discussions with the Richmond Town Council, we came to the conclusion it might be better if those bills were introduced as separate bills, separate items. And they seem to be, you know, independent thoughts and independent ideas that don't really depend on each other. So they're being, currently being drafted that way. And I think the legal reasoning for doing this to the Charahoe Act without a referendum is the thought that because neither of these items apply directly to the budget, there should be no reason why, they could not be changed legislatively.
So it's gonna be submitted? The word we've been hearing back is absolutely no, it's dead, it's not going anywhere. So that's not true.
Well, I'm, I, I plan to submit them unless I hear otherwise from the legal council.
So you're gonna submit legislation for what Richmond wants even though two towns said no? Well, they didn't say no, yeah.
Well, I don't know that, I, to my, to my knowledge, the Hopkinton Council, from an official resolution standpoint, is agnostic on the issue. I've heard varying viewpoints on the matriculation issue. If you wanna pass a resolution one way or the other, that would be, that would be one way for you to, I mean, I've seen statements in the press, but I don't base my decisions on what kind of legislation I'm gonna put in based on the comments of individual council people and media.
That was our goal, at least my goal, to get some kind of resolution, but it seems like we're a little bit torn here.
Yeah, so Richmond, I mean, so Charleston had put in, in, they had voted and they said no. But you've seen that.
Yes, I have seen that, but I also don't, I don't also represent, and I no longer represent Richmond, I mean, Charleston.
Right, so anyway, so the point is that this idea of if the three towns are on board, legislation gets submitted, and if the three towns aren't on board, then it doesn't. So see, we have an opening here to pursue other avenues.
Well, that's, I think that's perfectly valid. I mean, it's one of the ones, I think, and I'm glad you separated matriculation and the nine-member. I think that was wise too. But I, I think if the council can, they don't, I don't think you have to come through a consensus. I think you can vote and decide who feels that they're for matriculation and who is not, or who is for nine or who is not. And it would be something we can hand off to the legislative body so you know what our points of view are.
Ultimately, you'd like to have a resolution?
Sure. Or, or both from us. So we have time when we go meet with Richmond. If we can, if we end up deciding that both towns are in favor of other things in addition to these two things. We have time, it's not something that'll get voted on right away?
No, well, I mean...
It'll take time for us to meet with Richmond.
If you come up with other ideas besides these two ideas, there's plenty of time to introduce that legislation.
Okay, all right.
We have probably until the middle of May. I would strongly encourage the council to decide, you know, what it is they wanna support. Before then, the earlier the better. The formal deadline for submitting legislation is right around Valentine's Day. But every legislator is given the opportunity to introduce other bills on behalf of their town or towns. So I think this would fall under that, and I would just need the permission of the Speaker and the Majority Leader to do that. And I don't think that would be an issue for a town, a town issue.
So you two better meet pretty quick.
Yeah. Yes, Coach.
Has there been a legal determination by the school committee's attorneys that, of the language in the Charahoe Act as to whether or not those jurisdictional lines are drawn so that students can only attend the schools in those particular towns?
I'm not aware of any, any legal decision that's been rendered by the Charahoe School Committee. Have you, are you aware of any decision they've made?
Oh, no, I mean, I was just thinking if it's not mandated by the Charahoe Act, perhaps maybe there's no reason for legislation.
Well, and it's that ambiguity, because, you know, different people, I mean, the way it's worded right now is ambiguous. You could take it to mean that the school committee has that right, 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 right now to place a child wherever. I think the only stipulation is that if once they're placed in that school, then you need to stay there through the fourth grade. That's, that is specifically mentioned in the Charahoe Act. So, you know, I think the reasoning from Richmond and their co-solicitors was that, you know, if you're going to ask some, ask the Charahoe School Committee to do something that they're basically in support of doing, why not formally place that language and specifically, and alter the Charahoe Act so that it says that specifically? So there is no ambiguity. I, I think they're interested in avoiding a lawsuit, and I think that's probably why the Charahoe School Committee hasn't acted in that way so far.
John Anderson did say at the omnibus meeting that there was a distinct ruling in the Charahoe Act about the, how many school board members? The 3-3-4, or, yeah, 4-4-3. That was distinct, he said that in the omnibus meeting. He said that was a, that was in the Charahoe Act, that was definitive, that we had to stay with the 4-4-3. But he did not say anything about the matriculation.
Well, actually, he did. If I can, I'm gonna review the notes from the minutes of the omnibus. Craig Luzon, one of the school committee members, asked John Anderson, Johnny asked if John agreed with the Charahoe Act as it applies, Charahoe Act implies what they think it does, to which John noted that he feels it is more liberal than, than the way it is interpreted. You can take that provision out of the Charahoe Act and make it policy. You could amend the Charahoe Act and it would not have to go to the voters. Legislation could enact it. That's what was said.
Right, but that was about the matriculation, not about how many people.
Right, matriculation, right.
How many people, he said, you simply counted, it's just a Charahoe Act.
And, you know, the idea that I'm gonna be introducing this bill at the behest of Richmond, you know, without, whether, you know, Hopkinton has chimed in or not, and whether, you know, an idea needs to have the support of all three towns to pass through the legislature. As you know, I believe all three towns were against the elimination of the regionalization bonus. So I think that the General Assembly has the right to do whatever they want to do to the Charahoe Act, and they've proven that in the past, so...
I think the question's more though, whether it's sensible and something that, that should be done for a representative who represents this town to be doing something contrary to what the town wishes. Whether the legislature can do it or not, there's no question there. I think the more salient question is whether that's an action that you should be taking if the town doesn't support it. You know, in essence, what you're doing is choosing one town over another. And is that a good idea, I think is really the question more than whether the, sure, the legislature can do it, they can do what they want.
Well, and the way I would answer that is that, you know, very often that there are positions that the school committees take and the individual town councils take that I agree with, some that I agree with and some that I disagree with. And I think I have to do what I think is best for all 14,000 residents of my district. And that, you know, that's not just Exeter and Richmond, I mean, Hopkinton and Richmond, that also includes the town Exeter. So, in this particular case, you know, the town of Richmond, and I represent, that's over 57% of my district, has asked me to do this. So I'm gonna go forward with it. I would hope, especially in the matriculation issue, that you would join them, and then we would all be on the same page.
Nailed it, that's our problem. Hopkinton, we don't have anybody that represents us. We have, we have people that represent us, but it's a piece. You represent a piece and then you represent a big piece in Richmond, so...
You have Brian.
We have no political clout.
You have Chairman Kennedy...
Has a little piece of us.
No, he hasn't.
And then he has most, Moore and Westerly. He has Moore and Westerly.
But he has most of Hopkinton.
But he has more in Westerly, that's my point. So if Westerly wanted something and Hopkinton didn't, there you go. That's my, that's our, that's our new problem.
But it's also because we're a rural district. It's also because it's a rural district.
Not everybody.
Every legislator, the boundary lines aren't drawn on town lines or community lines in this state.
Drawn by numbers of people.
So, drawn by numbers of people, so, so Johnston may be combined with North City. North City may say, we're not getting much representation here because Johnston's got more people under us, something like that, and it's just a little piece of us. So it's not fair there, so it's not fair very place, but Larry, let me ask you a question, if you don't mind me jumping in here. Let me ask you a question. If Hopkinton votes against this, this piece of legislation that Richmond's going to must introduce...
Which one?
Matriculation.
Yes.
Okay. If Hopkinton votes against it, that would, that would be viewed negatively, in a negative manner by the legislature, I'm pretty sure. If we vote for it, it would be viewed as a positive, as a support of the idea and would be viewed in a positive nature by the legislature.
Yes.
And if, and if we took no stand on it, it would also be viewed as probably, they don't care, we'll just go with what Richmond wants. Is that correct? So there's two positives and one negatives?
Absolutely, I mean, and I think if, if...
Should be that simple then.
And certainly, if you feel so strongly about it, you write a resolution and you vote as a majority that you are against that resolution, that will be heard at the, at the, at the committee level. They may even refuse to hear the bill, saying that we don't think there's enough, we don't think there's enough unanimity, or support, so...
So we do have a voice.
There's no guarantee that because I'm introducing the bill that it is gonna pass.
Yeah, okay. Yes, Catherine, you wanna comment? Yes, sorry to make you do that.
People at home need to know what you've said.
I'm confused, didn't, I felt like we just had a conversation, all of us, where you two, maybe not in total agreement with you three, but you three were very, seemed to be in, in support of open matriculation. And you two were kind of on the fence. So now Richmond is posting, you know, proposing legislation, so can't you have your voice, can't you give your opinion now? I elected you, I trust you to make the opinion on my behalf. I don't know that you necessarily need to throw it back to the voters, so, great, but I also want to have an opinion. And I trust you to have that, to voice that opinion for me. So can't you do that, and then that kinda makes us go away? I guess that's what's...
Yeah, to a certain extent, but like you said, you know, there's, it's not that easy. Larry's got a long road ahead of him in terms of getting that passed and whatnot, but I'm fine with taking a vote on...
I, let me point out that if, if we just went along with these two items, okay, or even just the matriculation, you go along with that, we've just lost our leverage. Let's talk about realities. We have an opportunity for more, an opportunity to change the Charahoe Act. We have legislative people who will listen to us. We have an opportunity to go talk to Richmond and say, join us, we have had a problem for decades. Will you consider joining us on our issues and we'll join you on yours? But if you give up and just say, oh, we'll go with theirs, then we've lost... We should, we should at least have a conversation because we may end up with a stronger bill or three separate bills. And maybe it doesn't go anywhere, but we have to try for our townspeople. So that's what I'd like to suggest.
Yeah, I think at the end of the day, Catherine, thanks for your comment. I think, you know, Sylvia and I will work behind the scenes with Richmond and try and get some kinda consensus together here and figure it out between the two towns, and then we'll bring it to the council and try and get it to you ultimately, but...
You know, I understand Sylvia's point of view, however, I do not believe Charleston will ever come to this table. And perhaps because Richmond is finally having the taxes we have had, and they are finally in our bailiwick, which they haven't been before, maybe in the next couple of years, as they keep struggling with these higher taxes, they will be more receptive to changing the Charahoe Act and the funding. The funding is such a big bear that nothing will get accomplished, even where it should be accomplished, if we keep tying it to that issue. And I think that's a problem for the children that are alive now, driving an hour a day, not just politically for us in the future. And I do think that Sylvia is right, Richmond, the more it has a problem with the property tax, the more open they may be to our concerns about funding. But I do not want to turn away from matriculation, which can be solved, and it can be solved for this coming school year, because we want a bigger topic that we know would be an enormous battle, not to mention a legal battle. So I am for having them move forward with matriculation so we can get something accomplished, and we can still have you two meet to see if you can get the bigger picture established. There's no way that's going to happen in the next several years, and there are little children riding on buses right now. It could be changed. So that's my opinion.
Won't happen, everybody's got hour-long or 45-minute runs, it's life.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll figure it out, we'll figure it out, Catherine. You know, like I said, we've got, he's got time, we've got time, in two weeks we're meeting again. We need to put it on for a consensus vote, I'm fine with, I'm fine with matriculation, I think if it makes sense. But like I said, there's other council folks that have different views. Go ahead, Scott.
I just wanna say, I wanna back up Councilor Thompson, you know, I am a political being and...
I'm not.
Government, government is essence, it's about politics. The thing is, this whole situation this year has been generated by the conduct of the Richmond Town Council, and I'd like to see what they're willing to do with the other two towns instead of being a one-man band. That's, that's the issue, it remains to be seen. The town of Richmond, the Richmond Town Council has been out of step with its own citizens on three budget votes, which is a matter of fact, by overwhelming the votes of the people. So I really am gonna see what the Richmond Town Council's about and whether they've learned any lessons in the last year. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, appreciate your time. Okay. I guess motion to adjourn.
I did.
Oh, hold on.
Oh, did you want to?
I was gonna do a paper, some people.
Well, add it now, we didn't vote on it, so... Add it in, that's all right.
Sorry.
Well, it's already been moved and seconded, but you can add it during discussion, in memory of someone or whatever it is you need to do. Just do it, nobody's...
Yeah, just make a motion.
Just fine, just do it, Scott.
Okay, you make the motion and I, in memory of the late Edwin C. Bill, Peter G. Button Jr., Anna Briede, Michael D. Corbin, Trillie L. Sherman, and Helen J. Beaton.
And Tom Grady. And who? Tom Grady. Did Tom Grady die?
Tom, yes, he did.
Grady, oh, Grady, sorry.
And Thomas Grady.
Grady.
Well, I thought you said Grady too. And Thomas Grady Esquire.
Yep, thank you.
Oh, yeah, I saw his, his paper today.
Motion made, seconded. Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.